The Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Hanley?
My motion that we accept the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to announcements. I have one announcement this evening. Just prior to this meeting, we had the Morning Thunder Drum Group perform the honor song right here in City Hall in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we also did a land acknowledgement to honor native lands here in the city of Marquette. That was wonderful, and I do believe media was here to video record that. If you didn't catch it, you should be able to catch that later. And it was, I was honored to have them join us, and I think it was a very special moment here at City Hall and a first. All right, we are moving along here to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment, and you'll have three minutes to talk. There'll be a timer, and if you'd like to address the commission, go ahead and approach the podium and do so. And just a note that the commission's chance to respond to public comment, you can come on up, is at the end of the meeting. So while you talk, it's not a dialogue to go back and forth because there's quite a few people in chambers. I just wanted to explain, make your comments, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll have a chance to respond. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mary Smith. I'm just gonna leave this right here, just because. Okay, I'll keep my comments brief today. Good evening. My name is Ryan Stock, and I live at 1085 Woodridge Avenue. I'm a professor at Northern Michigan University's Department of Earth, Environmental, and Geographical Sciences. And although my research concerns climate justice and energy justice, I come to you today as a resident of Marquette County. So let me just cut to the chase. We're under direct threat from the climate crisis, and after spending more than $3 million on rebuilding Lake Shore Boulevard, you know climate change is already severely impacting Marquette. Climate impacts currently cost the United States $520 billion annually, costs that will continue to rise the longer we wait to implement solutions in Marquette, and we don't have the luxury of waiting. We need leadership and strong climate action now from the city commission. According to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, we only have until 2030, a little over eight years, to avert irreversible damage to the planetary system that will set into motion unpredictable tipping points of ecological collapse. To paraphrase Naomi Klein, responding to climate change requires us to literally change everything. Eight years to change everything. And I know that sounds daunting, but not quite as daunting as a business-as-usual scenario that abandons our great city and its great people to the ravages of climate chaos. Now, in the city of Marquette's strategic plan for fiscal years 2021 to 2023, the first ranked item under key issues and priorities expresses the need for a climate-based emergency action plan. Thank you. And that's, that's actually why we're here. Let's get to work. I'd love to collaborate with you to implement sustainable solutions to the climate crisis, but first, you need to declare a climate emergency resolution and draft a climate action plan for Marquette. The timing is perfect. You already have widespread support of your constituents. According to the Marquette County survey results from 2019, 50.3% of residents in Marquette County strongly agree, not just agree, strongly agree with the following statement: "Climate change is impacting Marquette County and should be considered when regulating future development." Inaction is essentially extinction. It's not an option for Marquette. So let's resolve to take action. And don't worry, we're not alone. Over 2,000 city commissions have already declared climate emergency resolutions, including many in the Great Lakes region like Munising, Duluth, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, Chicago. Marquette is next. And we're all here, ready to help you make it happen, actually. So thank you for prioritizing climate action in our community, and thanks for all the work you do. It's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? If you'd like to address the commission, you've got...
I've got a couple technical difficulties with the clock here.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Chief Rebo.
No, I'm trying to get them all.
Thanks for your patience. We'll get it set up here in a moment.
All right.
All right, go ahead. You've got three minutes. Name and physical address.
Hello, I'm Isabel Hongkamp, and I live at 302 Hunt Hall. And as a resident and student here in Marquette, I support the resolution to declare climate emergency. One thing that attracts a lot of people, myself included, to Marquette is the beautiful nature areas. I can clearly see how much the community enjoys nature and how well we already take care of our environment by keeping good maintenance of our trails. I chose to live in Marquette to spend as much time as possible outside with a community who loves nature as much as I do. It is important to me to have this climate action plan put in place to protect the area I and so many other people love so much. It saddens me to think that there could be a time where people would not have the opportunity to enjoy nature due to the effects of climate change. I spent a lot of time hiking and camping growing up, and that had a huge impact on my life since it brought me a lot closer to my friends and family, as well as got me interested in learning about how the world works. Going for a walk or just spending time outside had a significant impact on improving my mental health as well, since it always calms me down. I do not want to see a future where children will not have the same opportunities I did growing up. I support the climate resolution plan so it is ensured that our community can enjoy the beautiful area around Marquette for as long as possible. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eli Williams. I live at 1670 Ellsworth Street, Ithoming. And my relationship with the U.P. is a very dear one. This is my home. It's a place like no other, from the people to the landscape. It runs in my family, going back to the generation of Finnish immigrants. But my beautiful home is at risk. The state of the planet has drastically changed since my mother was a young girl in Marquette County. While relatively sheltered from major natural disasters like hurricanes in the Gulf, we are not immune to climate change. The severity of the winters, for example, is entirely transformed. I remember banks of snow well over my father's head, but now I dwarf them. Lake Superior has consumed beaches, homes on the lakefront, and Lake Shore Boulevard due to rising lake levels. We've spent millions of dollars being reactive to the problems presented by climate change, but it's time to be proactive. We take the attributary of the area for granted despite relying on it economically and for a sense of identity. I take great pride in saying that I live next to the most beautiful body of water in the world. Unless we are actively protecting the city against climate change, this landscape will rapidly change before us, drifting even further from the starting place that my predecessors called home. Thank you.
Your Honor, point of order, applause is not normally accepted in chambers.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. A note for the public, please hold your applause and stick to the comments only. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Sarah Middlefelt, 505 Albert Street. I just want to thank you all, city commissioners, for your leadership on this issue already about climate change. We know that it's been identified as a strategic area of emphasis going forward. And I also want to thank all of the young people and older people who've come out today to come forward and say, we want to work with you on a proactive solution, how we can move our community forward. I'm really excited to see and feel all the energy in this room, especially on this historic day that we acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and the land acknowledgement. So I just want to kind of support what everyone said and the work that my colleagues and friends in the community have put forward, the resolution, just a draft. Really curious to, you know, see what your comments are, how it can get changed. And I just want to say, I think the timing is great. We know, we had Dennis Stackowitz was on CBS News as a climate leader, a national climate leader, which was amazing, right? Marquette is being acknowledged for the work on Lake Shore and the, you know, mitigation or the adaptation work that's happened already in our community. We've had the Lake Shore Boulevard moved. We know that climate adaptation, we have several plans, at least the city has got a plan, and then there was the county plan for climate adaptation. And I think one thing that this climate resolution and the resulting climate action plan will focus more on is mitigation. That's something that I think the community needs to do a little bit more of. So adaptation is, you know, getting your community ready for the inevitable changes that are happening, changes in sea level, frequency of storms and flooding events. We already are working on that. I serve on our planning commission. Several of you might know me with that hat. And so our new land development code has got some really great stuff on there about riparian management and woodland protection, all these kind of like subtle things that we are doing for climate adaptation. But what we need is even stronger, more proactive mitigation efforts, so actually reducing our greenhouse gas emissions so that we're in line with both state and national and even international goals for carbon neutrality by 2050. So anyway, I guess I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of us are ready to help out with this effort. I can't speak on behalf of the planning commission, so I'm speaking as an individual, but I will say that I think many of us who serve in that capacity are ready to get to work and help think about how do we move our community forward on this issue, really looking at carbon, climate mitigation efforts specifically. So again, thank you all for your service and for taking this issue seriously. We look forward to seeing it move forward.
Hi, my name is Sophia Benigni. I live at 300 Hunt Hall. First, thank you to everyone for listening to us today. I really appreciate it. I'm a student at Northern Michigan University, and I'm majoring in environmental studies and sustainability. I have lived downstate in Metro Detroit my whole life, and when I decided to attend NMU, one of the biggest factors in my decision was location. Marquette is a gorgeous town with even better scenery, and I appreciate being able to bike for five minutes and go to the lake. I did not get that downstate. Back home, going to the lake took a lot of planning and was an all-day endeavor. That's part of what makes Marquette so attractive for myself and others, the easy access to nature. But as global warming continues to change climates around the globe, other people may migrate to Marquette and the U.P. for different reasons, being that they are not as affected by climate change in the U.P. than they are in other areas of the United States and the world. Climate refugees may seek this area for cooler temperatures and fresh water, and we need the Marquette Climate Action Plan to ensure that we can sustain the current population and biodiversity now in order to sustain them in the future. As a student and as a human on earth that is struggling watching the destruction of our planet, I urge you to vote yes on the climate action plan. Thank you.
My name is Karen Schmidt, and I live at 280 Shop Point. My husband and I own a rental home on Hewitt Street, 226 West Hewitt. I'm urging the commission to develop a climate action plan for Marquette. The shift to clean energy is unstoppable, and it will be the dominant force shaping our economics in the next 30 years. It will unfold even if federal policy is weak or erratic. This change should not be framed as painful or costly, but one of gain, with no limits as to tapping into new markets and opportunities for sustainable growth. Roottop and community solar, heat pumps, clean and efficient transportation, and energy efficiency improvements are all new markets that a climate action plan can help promote. Here's a mailer I received in the mail from a local business advertising heat pumps. A climate action plan can help our local businesses by educating the public about benefits of heat pumps. I'm concerned about the influx of people into this area. Never in my wildest imagination did I ever think people would flock here because of the weather. Unfortunately, the development model in place still appears to be business as usual. A climate action plan could enact building codes for energy performance standards and require new construction to be ready to become all-electric. We cannot, as a community, continue to expand and rely on the fossil fuel infrastructure. Think of the current predicament the coal mining towns are in. A climate action plan will help low-to-middle-income families. My husband and I have owned several rental houses in town over the years and currently own one on Hewitt Street. We are very familiar with the struggles of low-income families to pay rent in utilities and take pride that we provide a safe, clean living space for people with lower income scale. We would love to install solar on our roof of our rental house and eventually a heat pump to lower electric bills for our renters. A climate action plan could help provide programs and incentives for this to happen. The well-off will be able to buy electric cars and retrofit their homes to become all-electric. Middle-income homeowners, landlords, and renters will need incentives and programs to help retrofit their housing. A climate action plan is simple in theory: clean up the grid, then electrify everything. A good plan can help Marquette be proactive, not reactive, for the future that is quickly coming. In my mind, it's just basically good governance, and I want to thank you for your dedication to the well-being of our community. Thank you.
I'm John O'Brien. This is my daughter, Soral. We live on 912 Wilson Street in Marquette. I want to echo what Karen said there about that we need to move past fossil fuels and, you know, generate our electricity with renewable energy and then power everything with renewable electricity. The city stands to gain quite a bit if that plan were to take effect. I mean, the, the power for Marquette comes from the municipality. So, you know, we could, we could, you know, it would benefit the power company, which is the city, if we were to get all the energy from that rather than SEMCO, you know, propane, oil, whatever. So that's one point. Another one, you know, public sentiment was brought up at the beginning. I think Professor Stock mentioned a survey in the area showing that, you know, action on climate change is something that people prioritize. The vast majority of people across the spectrum, it doesn't matter if they're progressive, conservative, they, they know that climate change is happening, that we're causing it as humans burning fossil fuels, and they want to see some action on it. However, most people don't believe that government is doing enough to address it and aren't. They don't have faith that we will succeed because of the lack of inaction by government. So that is where we can really step up and make some of this stuff happen because it doesn't on its own, okay? If you, if you look at what people are doing when they're remodeling, putting in gas boilers still, I mean, putting in, you know, gas oven ranges, that's fine if, you know, that's, that's what they know works, right? Okay, we're not, we're not trying to like regulate or like take things away from people, but to, you know, put the, the programs and policies in place to help them make that, that right choice. And, you know, it's, the thing is, fossil fuels are artificially low-priced because the effects of burning them, the cost of that is borne on all of us when we have to deal with these severe storms that ruin our roads, when we have to deal with all the damages, okay? And so it would be, it would be nice to, to set up future generations to not have to pay those costs. They're not even going to have the fossil fuels to utilize anymore. So let's, let's meet those, the net zero by 2050. Let's do what we can and help future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Callista Rockwell. My address is 332 West Crescent Street in Marquette. So I'm a student at Northern Michigan University. I'm a senior this year in environmental sustainability. And through my four years of being in Marquette, I've developed a really strong connection to this place. I'm originally from Grand Haven. I've dealt a lot with the erosion impacts in that side of the state, but coming up here and seeing that it's still taking place in a different area, that was a little shocking to me. So yeah, that's something. And as an environmental sustainability major on campus, I learn a lot about climate change every day. I learn a lot about its intersectional impacts on communities all over the globe. I'm also a campus chapter co-leader of Citizens Climate Lobby, so that's a national lobby group focused on enacting climate legislation. And I've learned a lot with my time there about the importance of local-level changemaking and the power that that holds. I think that the people who call this place home share a common passion for protecting this place. And I also think that declaring a state of climate emergency and enacting a climate action plan is an imperative first step. I think it'll open up the discussion, it'll, it'll open up the discussion, take action, and implement meaningful solutions for our city and overarching our planet. So, yeah.
Certainly, if more members of the public are interested in making public comment, come on up. I do have a question for our city attorney and to kind of put on the commission radar as we wait. We do have a presentation that we need to do sooner or later. I'm not sure if we can enter pause, public comment, and come back to it or not. We're not able to?
Now, now that you've approved the agenda...
Okay, I just wanted to double check. So we will continue on with public comment. I just wanted to see what maybe could be done there. All right, go ahead. Three minutes.
Leslie Williams, 124 Blum-Huber Avenue. My issue is trivial compared to climate change. Nevertheless, I'd like to address the possible requirement that we all have 64-gallon garbage in recycling carts. Thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse for noticing that 60% of Marquette City residents haven't chosen to use them and therefore voted nay. I am one of the 60%, and I am here to tell you the reason I do not use them. My house was built in 1895 before there were cars, so there wasn't a need for driveways. Somewhere along the way, a driveway was paved next to my house with just enough room to accommodate the width of a car. On one side of my driveway is the western wall of my house, and the other side of the driveway is a retaining wall since I live on a hill. At the back of my driveway is a wall with a set of steps. The width of my driveway is 10 feet. When my car is parked there, the space between my car and the retaining wall is barely two feet, depending on how close I pull to the wall of my house. There is not sufficient room for me to wheel a 64-gallon cart between my car and a wall. Assuming that I would store the 64-gallon carts at the back of my driveway and not in my front yard, here is what I would have to do. After work, I would pull my, both my vehicles out into the street, drag the two carts onto the road, then pull the vehicles back into the driveway. The next morning, I would have to repeat that to put the carts back in the driveway. I'm not going to do that. If I am forced to have 64-gallon garbage carts, they will be parked in my front yard in the summer and on the sidewalk in the winter. I'm sure there are households who generate 64 gallons of garbage and recycling each week, but I don't. I'm lucky if I fill one of the small garbage bags each week, and I don't fill the recycling bin each week either. The other R words that go with recycling are reduce and reuse. I endeavor to reduce and reuse in addition to recycle. If you are going to mandate these 64-gallon carts, which I consider an eyesore, I ask that you provide some sort of exemption for people like me who live in a place where they are not reasonable to use. I would rather put my bag of garbage and recycling in my car and drop it off at a transfer station than deal with the carts. The best incentive for recycling is the monetary incentive which we have with the garbage bags we have to purchase. I have to pay extra to dispose of garbage, so I recycle whatever I can. This is the city. Some of the lots are small, and some houses are close together. Although carts may work in other places, I don't think they work for everyone in the city. Please keep them optional.
Anyone else for public comment?
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. Joe Sabol, S-A-B-O-L, 316 Harrison Street. I'll be talking about climate change tonight and what you can do about it. First of all, thank you very much for the efforts you've made to date. I've noticed that there's LED lights on some of the paths and street corners and so forth. It helps quite a bit. I think that there's much more you can do as far as motion sensors so that all of these lights are not on all the time, but there's much more that we can do than just that. I will point out that I've been studying climate change since the 1980s when I was the youngest assistant professor teaching chemistry, and the first thing that I learned about that was that weather is going to change. We're still going to have high temperature, low temperature, rain, drought, and so forth, but the extremes are going to be more and more frequent, and we've seen that in the last 40 years. I own agricultural property in Wisconsin, and I've noticed in the last 50 years that there has been changes in the weather patterns. It's been dry in 2012. It was dry in 2011 as well. So those things can happen. What I want to encourage you to do is, I've seen the City of Munising Climate Action Plan. It's a public document. I found it. You should be able to find it, and you could copy it. You could wordsmith it and paraphrase it if you want. If you need help, ask me, and I'll help draft the comment for you because that's some of the things that I do for the chemical industry to date. But before I go into that, I will, or in addition to that, I will read a few things from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change from the United Nations. The website, you can find thousands of pages of documents going back to the 90s. It's ipcc.ch. It's based in Switzerland, ipcc.ch. The sixth assessment report, the summary for policymakers, starts with the current state of the climate. It's unequivocal that human influence has warmed the atmosphere, ocean, and land. Widespread and rapid changes in the atmosphere, ocean, cryosphere, and biosphere have occurred. The scale of recent changes across the climate system as a whole and the present state of many aspects of the climate system are unprecedented over many centuries to thousands of years. This is written in August 9th, 2021. I'll skip to the limiting factors for climate change. From a physical science perspective, limiting human-induced global warming to a specific level requires limiting cumulative CO2 emission reaching to at least net-zero CO2 emissions along with strong reductions in other greenhouse gas emissions. Strong, rapid, and sustained reductions in methane emissions would also limit the warming effects resulting in, from declining aerosol pollution and would improve air quality. Thank you very much. If you need help, please contact me. I'm at your service. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
For those of you in the audience who don't know me yet, my name is Margaret Brum. I live at 404 East Magnetic Street, which is the house I was raised in, and I'm now in the process of making it livable again. I listen to everything people said about climate change, and I want to make an offer to everyone in this room. You want to get started on climate change right now without anything from them because they are government people and they have to follow a whole bunch of rules? The number one thing you can do right now for climate change is pick up the garbage. And for the last three and a half months of my life, I've devoted a considerable amount of time to picking up cigarette butts in the city, and I'm proud to state that this town of Marquette, Michigan is one of the few towns in the United States, if not the world, that has a viable cigarette recycling program. And you're saying to yourself, I'm talking about the big stuff. I want to declare climate emergency. There's nothing more toxic to the environment than a cigarette butt. I seldom brag about my academic credentials, but I am a degreed chemical engineer from Michigan Tech, and I'm also a lawyer and a patent lawyer, and I know how to read technical documents, and there simply is nothing worse. So if you want to help right now, I would welcome your help in picking up cigarette butts because they're everywhere in town, every parking lot, every church, every building. Speaking of other things that can be done right now without anything from the city, stop throwing garbage in the street. In the last four months, I have found spark plugs, sharp-edge metal. Went down to the lake last night to take a video. Huge chunk of styrofoam in the water on the shoreline. Picked it up. It was obviously part of a structure because it was way too heavy. You want to do something right now, and you don't even have to use the word emergency. You can just show up Tuesday night, 6:00, Matson Park. I will have gear for you. I've got grabber sticks. I've got gloves. I've got gloves. I've got containers. We can start climate change work right now because we've been doing it right now. We shipped almost 25 pounds of cigarette butts out of this city. Before you declare an emergency, which is a very frightening word, I suggest starting with steps that can be done now without declaring an emergency and start moving towards a better future, doing something that requires a change in how people have an attitude towards throwing garbage away. Because I would like to blame the tourists for this, but I got to tell you, most of them are gone and the garbage continues, and so do the cigarette butts. So Tuesday night, Mattson Park, 6:00 p.m. Please join me. Not all of this is free. I've got sponsors from the community. Again, thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Annika Enders. I'm from 345 Vanantrop Hall. I'm a senior outdoor recreation leadership and management major here at Northern. And a big thing we focus on is leave no trace. And essentially what that is, is just leaving where we are, leaving the earth better than we found it. And there's also an old proverb that goes something like, we're not inheriting the land from our ancestors, we're borrowing it from future generations. So I urge you to think about that and help us leave the earth better than we have it right now. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, public comment is now closed. We are now moving on to our first of two presentations for the evening. First, we have the MEDC. We have a Redevelopment Ready Communities RRC certification. And I think we will go over to the side podium. Do I have any staff joining me for that, or is it just Dennis? Which way? Just Dennis and me? Okay, just making sure.
There we go. Thank you, especially with this mask. I know it doesn't carry super well. So good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Germain. I'm a planner with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, specifically the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. And quite frankly, I'm the luckiest one on our team because I cover the UP. As a Northern grad and as our boss growing up in Marquette, we have a real special place in our hearts in the program for the city of Marquette. So three years ago, we came to the city with what was called a baseline report. And we said, if you would like to receive our certification, which helps drive community-driven economic development instead of reactive traditional economic development, you're establishing a vision for what you want your community to become, including integrating resiliency and other types of concepts into your developments, and then working through all those best practices. It's no easy task to get through this program. So three years ago, we came to you and said, here's everything you need to do. Three years later, almost to the day, actually in June, the city was officially awarded RRC certification. You're one of 59 communities in the entire state to go through there. And when you think about the state has roughly 1,300, 1,400 local units of government, to 59 in the whole state that have this certification is an incredibly impressive feat. So we wanted to come here tonight. We were hoping for a bigger party. It's obviously not the best time in history for a big party right now, so hopefully we'll be back to do something bigger in the future years. But we always think it's important to directly acknowledge the achievements of our communities and especially of the staff that have worked to do this. We've always worked very closely with Dennis overseeing a number of improvements in the community development department. Becky with the DDA oversaw the city's massive DDA plan update, which is an incredible document that used RRC technical assistance money to make that occur. There were also, of course, other folks at the city like Dave in Community Developments and Sean in the City Manager's Office, who of course worked on a number of other improvements and parts of the RRC certification process. So with this certification, the city now has access to a number of other benefits as well, including Matchdown Main, which is a small business support program. Marquette is one of four communities in the entire UP that now has access to that because of its certification in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. So with that, we wanted to give you this shiny handcrafted award. Every community gets an individual-made one by an artist down in Lansing. So they all have their own little neat quirks and probably little dents here and there in them, but you can hang this up anywhere in the city. We also have a number of other things that we'll be dropping off with Dennis tomorrow, Community Developments, so you can spread the word and start to work hand-in-hand with developers to do community-driven developments where your community priorities are also integrated into development projects that you see occur. So with that, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Germain. Shaking hand.
Can I actually get you to come take a picture? I usually have my counterpart. She couldn't make it tonight, so she...
Yeah, I'm afraid of this. Okay. Sure, maybe we can... Thank you, Christopher. I appreciate you coming here in person and presenting. That means a lot to us here in Marquette. I know we've done a lot of work to get here. I'm really proud of the Work City staff is on, especially we've got Dennis, we've got Sean, we've got Dave, Becky, and all the city staff who spent a lot of time getting us here. And I know there's a lot of work ahead, and that's really kind of the exciting part. So thank you, Will. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I will leave that with Dennis. I don't want to be responsible for maintaining that. Thank you. All right, and I'm actually just going to announce our next item. We've got another presentation here, Becky Finko with the DDA. So I'll let her go ahead and roll into her presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to take my mask off here. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Rebecca Finko, and I am the Executive Director of the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. It's great to see so many people here today. I would love to think that you're all here to learn more about the DDA. But nonetheless, it will be a great learning opportunity for you. I wanted to share with you today some of our accomplishments over the course of the past year, 2021, and also a brief look ahead to 2022 and some of the goals and objectives we have in place for the coming year. And if I may, it looks like Christopher may have left already, but I did want to... Well, there is. Christopher, before you leave, I did just want to thank you. The MEDC has been a very valuable partner to both the DDA and downtown Marquette for a number of years. We very much look forward to working with you in this new capacity as well. So thank you. I guess. Okay. So the Marquette DDA is a public authority established in 1976 by the city of Marquette in accordance with Michigan Public Act 197, which has since been replaced with Public Act 57 of 2018. And our goal is to prevent deterioration in business districts, encourage historic preservation, increase property tax valuation, and to promote economic growth. And to that end, some of our fundamental goals include increasing property values throughout downtown, creating and maintaining a favorable business and investment environment, ensuring the sustainability of the downtown district, and supporting downtown property owners, business owners, professionals, and residents. This is a map of the DDA district. You'll see the kind of gray color underlayment as our district boundaries. So you'll see what we often refer to as the core downtown, being from the lakeshore west to Seventh Street, from roughly Bergen Avenue north to Ridge. And then in 2011, we did also incorporate the Third Street corridor all the way up to Fair Avenue. So as a bit of background on the DDA, we were established in 1976, as I mentioned. Since then, we have gone through three TIF development plans. We are currently in the midst of TIF Development Plan Number Three, which will be set to expire in 2036. Also, since then, you'll see that we have expanded our district twice, the first time including Front Street, Bergen Avenue, Bergen Avenue, and the Fifth to Seventh Street corridor. And in 2011, again, as I mentioned, we added that Third Street corridor as well. So some of the general statistics about the downtown district, we have approximately 300 businesses, 2,682 employees, and 358 residents at this time. We also, as far as parcels within our district, have 259 parcels in that core downtown and 61 on the Third Street corridor. We are governed by a nine-member Board of Directors, eight of which are appointed by the city commission and serve four-year terms. The ninth member, serving by virtue of legislation, is our city manager here in Kovacs. We have had some pretty significant turnover the past year with our board. Happy to say, though, right now that we are at full capacity. And we can't do what we do without an amazing staff. In addition to myself, we have an events and promotions coordinator, a parking and operations manager, the farmers market manager, and we have a maintenance department managed by Jeff Steiner with four or five maintenance staff members. And as you see, we are hiring, I think like a lot of people. If anybody's interested, let me know. But we are hiring an administrative assistant and also a maintenance worker at this time. And to delve into some financials, I wanted to share our fiscal year-end report. And happy to say that we ended the year on a stronger financial position than we had intended. You'll notice our total revenues at 1.6 million, total expenditures at 1.55. So we did end the year in the black. We had not anticipated doing so largely because we had two pretty sizable capital improvement projects this year that necessitated us kind of dipping into our fund balance originally. However, we were able to refund an existing bond. And one of those projects, which I'll talk more about briefly in a moment, is the Bluff Street Ramp Restoration. When we refunded that bond, we were able to add, what, 265,000 to the length of that bond, still saving on a pretty significant decrease in our interest rate and using those funds then to partially fund that project. So all in all, we were able to come out on top in the black. And just to briefly talk about our revenue sources, 54% may be hard to see there, but 54% of our revenues come from our tax increment financing plan. We also receive two mil property tax levy on properties within the district, and that accounts for about 4% of our revenues. We also manage rental parking and the parking meters and pay stations downtown, which accounts for about 18% of our revenues. And then we have other revenues as well, indicate, of course, those bond proceeds I just mentioned, promotions and sponsorships, farmers market fees, rental fees of the Marquette Commons, and then other miscellaneous revenues. And similar breakdown for our expenditures, you'll see again, those capital projects that I mentioned accounted for 34% of our expenditures this year. Payroll and benefits, 26%. That's pretty common for such expenses to be a large portion of your expenditures. Otherwise, the others are smaller pieces of the pie. And then a brief look at our parking fund analysis. This is interesting to look at in that it shows from 2018 to 2021 what our parking revenues and expenditures were. Of course, COVID hit in 2020, and that did have a pretty significant impact on our parking revenues. And of course, people are still, to some extent, working from home. So you'll see there that, especially the chart at the bottom, 2019 is an average year for us. 2020, then, you'll see those parking rental permits and the meter revenues decreasing significantly. And then 2021, we've seen a rebound, but not to pre-COVID levels, so. And then I wanted to provide this graph. As I mentioned, increasing property values is one of our primary missions. This graph shows how those property values throughout the district have significantly and consistently increased from the base year of 1992 for a total of 10.6 million approximately. 2021's values are just over 44 million. So the DDA captures the TIF millage on the difference, which is at $33.6 million. Okay. And now to move into some of the fun stuff. We were fortunate to receive a grant through the MEDC through their facade restoration initiative program three years ago, where they awarded the DDA $300,000. And then the DDA board also contributed $30,000 and redistributed those funds to 12 different property owners throughout the district to help them make improvements to their properties. You've probably seen, hopefully, many of the projects listed here. We have 11 projects completed. They have been truly transformational and created what I like to say are pockets of revitalization in different areas throughout our entire district. We currently have one project that is just finishing up, that being Black Rock Brewery. So again, just wanted to acknowledge the MEDC and their support in the past and hopefully in the future. And now our 2021 capital improvement projects. So we did have three primary projects this year, one being that Bluff Street Ramp Repair Project. It involved resurfacing of the waterproof deck membrane on the upper level as well as a replacement of the main expansion joint and some general concrete repairs. It was a $276,000 project funded primarily through the 2021 bond refinancing. And I just want to call attention, if I may, to the photos, in particular, the one on the top. I have to say that I never thought I would utter these words, but the Bluff Street Ramp is beautiful. And many thanks to WLC TV6 for providing that photo. And that is an after photo that shows the project in its entirety. And of course, the dramatic lighting is especially artistic as well. We also worked in collaboration with the city of Marquette to reconstruct the 100 block of West Washington Street. That was a major undertaking, especially on the tail end of COVID. So admittedly, not the best time to be doing a project such as that, but nonetheless, it was set and ready to go and designed, and we worked through any challenges, partnered with the downtown businesses, really went rather smoothly. As part of that project, and I will get to this in a little bit too, but we did pull out the single-space parking meters and replace them with pay stations, which is a soft launch of a greater initiative coming ahead in 2022. So stay tuned for that. Also, if you look closely at that photo, you'll notice the green paint, which, to my dismay, was spilled on the street shortly after it opened. But things happen. And then our final capital improvement project for the year was a signage replacement project where we gave some new life to our identity signage throughout downtown. And you may have seen those signs at the entryways of different green spaces downtown, the Rosewood Walkway, the Phil and Mistow Pocket Park, and the parking lots. I showed some befores and afters. Obviously, the afters with the black paint, that was all painted in-house by our maintenance staff, and then the sign faces that were done by Cook Sign. Also, as part of that initiative, we did resticker the street signs, as you'll see up above the front street sign. And that is a continuation of a rebranding rollout from an initiative we undertook about three years ago, two years ago, where we're now working to enhance that continuity and graphic identity of downtown Marquette with that colorful gradient M. And our maintenance staff, as I mentioned, they worked very hard this year, not only with the signs, but amongst other things, they also are outside all year long, all weather conditions. They're doing the summer landscaping and lawn care, as well as the winter plowing, the shoveling, sanding, sweeping, trash removal, watering of flowers, installing the flags and other seasonal decorations on the light poles, installing holiday lights, maintenance of the Marquette Commons. We also host a number of events in Farmers Market, which they help with the setup and teardown of. And again, the parking lot maintenance and the Bluff Street Ramp maintenance, meters, pay stations, elevators, stair towers, they do it all. So if you're enjoying downtown and appreciating that it is very well-kept, that is thanks to our maintenance staff. to our maintenance staff. We also manage parking, as I mentioned. We have seven parking lots plus the Bluff Street Parking Ramp. Total parking spaces, both in the parking lots ramp and on-street, are 1,380. We also, at this point, have 318 parking meters, seven pay stations, and a dual-port electric vehicle charging station in the lower level of the ramp. 2021 has seen, again, the installation of those four pay stations on Washington Street, which was accompanied by a pretty significant outreach project for the community, educating the public on how to use those pay stations, and engaging in a public relations campaign. We also implemented a digital permitting program recently that we continued to fine-tune throughout 2021. We have striped both the parking lots and worked with the city on the on-street line striping, and of course, again, the Bluff Street Ramp Repair Project. Now, looking ahead to 2022, we will be implementing that comprehensive replacement plan of the parking meters. So look to see more pay stations as we transition to a pay station environment. I think you'll find in the corner there, I've got the benefits of pay stations. Primarily, they will be much more suited to our winter climate. They are heated and hardwired, so not as reliant on the sunshine that unfortunately we don't get too much of in the winter. So looking forward to that rollout. And it's important to note how those parking revenues are used. We are reliant upon them to provide the services of a safe and accessible parking environment for all users. So 100% of those parking revenues that we receive go back into snow removal, clearing of the sidewalks, the parking lot maintenance, the stair towers, elevator towers, and of course, the line striping and lighting of the downtown parking lots. So any revenues that we receive, again, people may wonder, why do we have to pay for parking? Because all of those services come at a cost, and those revenues help to cover them. We also manage the downtown Marquette Farmers Market. This year, we have seen 138 vendors, 49 of them notably are new to the market. We have a Saturday market that runs nine to one. And for a portion of the season, we also implemented a Wednesday market this year, which proved to be quite successful and took on its own eclectic vibe. Like, it definitely has its own feel, and we look to continue developing that into the next year. We have made great strides in the financial solvency of the market, ending fiscal year 2021 in the positive, which I believe to be the first time in the history of the market that we have accomplished that. So very proud of that. We have introduced additional revenue streams to help us get to that point and have also been pretty active in introducing new promotions and events for the market, including those that are listed there. We also host a number of community events. This year, with COVID still happening for that first half of the year, we unfortunately didn't see too much activity. However, once those restrictions were lifted, we did ramp back up our events. We participated in Art Week, and that is our installation, in the Rosewood Walkway for this year. We brought Blueberry Festival back on a somewhat limited basis, but we found that attendance was still on par with previous years. We hosted our music on Third Series and Classic Cars on Third Street. And I just wanted to point out that the Classic Cars on Third Street event actually is a fundraiser for the Women's Center, and we work very closely with Bill and Tammy Dupra from Third Base Bar, who do a lot of work for that event. And proud to say that this year, we were able to present a check to the Women's Center for just over $16,000. And as I've shared with the City Commission in the past, we do communicate with our businesses with regular surveys to find out how things are going, what needs they might have, how we could better fill those needs. And we have recently conducted another survey for the purpose of assessing their summer 2021, what were their successes, what were their challenges. So I just wanted to point out the pie chart there. We had 41 total responses. 61% of them said great, that business exceeded 2020. 17% said neutral, good, about the same as 2020. There was very few, I don't have a percentage on there, but very few who said that it was below expectations, and some that, for various reasons, weren't open in 2020 to have a point of comparison. But I think overall, it paints a very positive picture of where our businesses are, again, coming on the heels of COVID. So look to continue supporting them in that way. One thing that we have heard from the businesses of late is concerns with regard to their staffing levels. So we did ask them that question, to please let us know how you're doing with your staffing levels. And we're pleased to see that roughly 61% of the respondents are at full or near-full employment levels, which is very positive. We did have 8% who are currently short-staffed and have had to make modifications to their offerings or their hours in order to accommodate. So again, for those of you who may be looking for part-time, please see some of our downtown We did welcome 11 new businesses in 2021. They're all listed there. We have additional businesses who are looking to open soon, including the Third Street Marketplace. We said goodbye to two businesses in 2021, being the New York Deli and Towner's Pastry and Chocolate. You'll notice Towner's opened and then unfortunately closed in the same year, so you'll see them on both of those lists. And looking ahead to 2022, again, we do have some capital improvement parking projects on the horizon, being that pay station replacement plan, making some parking lot signage updates in conjunction with those changes, and also some parking lot maintenance in terms of crack filling and sealing and those types of things. We will continue to implement parking management strategies, public transit strategies that were identified in our downtown plan. We'll be pursuing a TIF district for the Third Street Corridor. We will be collaborating on the Vault Project with the development team and the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We will start looking at modifications to the Marquette Commons facility to incorporate more green space and also to make it more suitable for the Farmers Market. We will look to reinstate our local facade improvement grant program for property owners in the district. We will continue to seek grant funding for public improvement projects and to assist property owners with making property improvements, and will work toward a wayfinding signage And that's it. I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Becky. That was a very thorough presentation with a lot of information. You are working hard at the DDA.
Thank you.
That's apparent to me. I know you and your team have been really creative through the last couple of years of interesting circumstances, and I certainly appreciate that passion and creativity in making sure our businesses are well-cared for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll now see if any other commissioners would like to make any comments or have any questions for Becky. Oh, one thing before I forget, nice job on the Farmers Market.
Thank you.
That was something that was a commission request a couple, maybe three years back, and you've made it happen in 2021, so.
Yes.
Some snaps there, for sure. I mean, I was shocked to see that. That was a long time coming. Nice work.
And that's something we're very, very proud of and have worked together with the market vendors to make some changes, with streamlining our own processes to make them more efficient, bringing on new programs. It's really been a collaborative effort and has been very rewarding to see that progress.
That's great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions or comments for Becky? Mr. Stonehouse?
Well, I would just say, Your Honor, how immensely proud I think we all are of the DDA and the great work you and your team does, but also of the downtown as a whole and the fact that we have a vibrant, living, functioning, exciting downtown when you compare it to other cities in the state and other cities in the region where that has not occurred. And that's directly the effort, the quality of folks that are in our DDA, having the imagination and the vision to move forward with what can be. And then you close your eyes for a minute, and they make it happen. So please carry it on. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you so much, Becky, and thank you to all of your staff for the hard work that you do. I just wanted to comment, again, I think I've said it in the past, but how impressed I am with the downtown plan that the DDA put together, and I think it's very forward-thinking. I was very happy to see an entire section dedicated, and several recommendations dedicated to affordable housing and sustainability and things like that. And, you know, I think it's great that we're acknowledging how important all those issues are within our downtown as well. And I just had a quick question for you. Do you, I know you noted that the DDA is currently full. Do you anticipate any vacancies coming open anytime soon, or?
On our board?
Yeah.
We do have two board members who will be completing their terms at the end of this year. One of them is termed out, so we will have a vacancy. The other one has the option to re-up for another term.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask that, just because I know we have a lot of passionate young folks in the community or from the community in the room tonight. And I think it's important to just note, like, the DDA does incredibly important work that's relevant, not just to things like economic development, but also to issues that really affect young people, like housing, climate, sustainability, and things like that. So this is one of, like, a couple dozen volunteer boards in the city of Marquette that you could apply for. I promise you, if you apply, you will almost certainly get appointed. We're often struggling to get people to sign up. Usually, they meet like once a month or something for like an hour. And I think it would be especially great to get more perspectives from younger people and also from students as well, because those are two perspectives that are often lacking. I mean, that's why I ran for the City Commission, so, and I got started volunteering on boards like the DDA. So, yeah, just want to throw that out there. People should look, check it out. You can look at the city website for more information about the DDA, if you want to apply for that vacancy next year or for one of the other boards in the city.
Any other commissioners, comments or questions for Becky with the DDA? All right. Thank you, Becky. Really appreciate you joining us today.
Thank you so much.
Great work.
Thank you.
Right. So we now are moving on to our public hearings. And one note, these items, I'm trying to find my notes here, sorry. Got a little bit. Both Item 3 and 4 will require a roll call vote. Just a note for the public and the commission. So our first is Item Number 3, Establishment of an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District. Again, this will require a roll call vote. And just a note for the commissioners and for the public, this item is directly tied to Item Number 4. So commissioners, if you have a question or a concern with Item 3, I would suggest that you, number 3 or number 4, I would suggest that you ask it, because if you're going to approve one, you should approve the other or not approve both, because they are tie-barred together, but we do have to have separate action. City Clerk, could we please have the background on Item 3?
Thank you, Mayor. This summer, representatives from Buffalo Dragon Investments LLC approached city staff to discuss the possibility of requesting an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act (OPRA) exemption certificate for their recently purchased property at 136 West Washington Street. The guidelines for establishing Oprah districts and processing Oprah exemption certificates are detailed in Michigan Public Act 146 of 2000. Under this act, local government units may only grant exemption certificates to properties within an established Oprah district. Prior to establishing a district, the local government unit must first conduct a public hearing. This hearing was scheduled during the commission's September 27th regular meeting. This item should be considered tonight in conjunction with the public hearing to review the exemption application from Buffalo Dragon Investments. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, approve the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 136 West Washington Street and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open on this item. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this public hearing regarding this specific subject may approach the podium. You've got three minutes to speak. Name and physical address, please. Anyone for the public hearing?
I just wanted to let you know that...
Okay, if you'd like to make a comment for the public hearing, please approach the podium, name and physical address.
Sorry for being so awkward. I'm new at this.
No worries.
So I'm with Buffalo Dragon Investments, and we are the applicant. And I just wanted to let you all...
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. 136 West Washington Street, Anne White. And we're the applicant, and so I just want to let you know I'm present. If there's any questions, please feel free. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 136 West Washington Street and to direct the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
I think it's very pleasant, Your Honor, to see the use of that disused property and what they're trying to do with it, and I think we all should be behind that effort. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, I appreciate that you're here and traveled up here to be here this evening. I, you know, just for the public, this is a $2.6 million project that expects to have six full-time jobs, one completion, 20 construction jobs. And I think the public will find it interesting that was originally built by Peter White and was the Peter White Public Library at one time, and then the Nordic Theater, and then Book World. So I'm very much looking forward to this project joining the vibrancy of our downtown.
Any other comments or discussion from the commission? I just wanted to add that this, it's at 136 West, wow, is it 136 West Washington? And that is right on the 100 block of downtown. So as we were talking about the downtown, this is, anytime we have a chance to rehab a project that is kind of in the heart of our downtown, we certainly want to take that chance. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you conduct that for us, please?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Onto Item Number 4, another public hearing, and this is for the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate. Again, this will require a roll call vote and is directly tied to the item we just voted on, Number 3. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This summer, representatives from Buffalo Dragon Investments LLC approached city staff to discuss the possibility of requesting an obsolete property rehabilitation act (OPRA) exemption certificate for their recently purchased property at 136 West Washington Street. The guidelines for establishing Oprah districts and processing Oprah exemption certificates are detailed in Michigan Public Act 146 of 2000. Under this act, local government units may grant tax exemption certificates to properties within established Oprah districts. Such exemptions may have terms of up to 12 years. The principles of Buffalo Dragon Investments LLC have indicated that they plan a $2.6 million rehabilitation on the parcel, ultimately leading to the restoration of the property to an economically efficient condition and culminating in the opening of the honorable distillery. Including construction employment, the project is estimated to create 26 jobs. The applicant has requested a three-year exemption under Public Act 146 of 2000. This three-year window will begin on December 31st, 2021. Granting of this exemption application would mean that local property taxes on the parcel would be effectively frozen at current levels during the next three years. As this property is located in the Marquette Downtown Development Authority's Tax Increment Financing District, any increases in future tax revenue would go primarily to the DDA. During the August meeting, the DDA Board of Directors voted to support this proposal. The applicant has also requested that the Michigan State Tax Commission consider reducing the school operating and state education tax levies by 50% during the term of the exemption. Under the requirements in the act, a certificate may only be granted for a property located within an Oprah district and may only be acted upon following a public hearing. This hearing was scheduled during the commission's September 27th regular meeting. This item can only be considered tonight in conjunction with the public hearing to consider the establishment of an Oprah district at 136 West Washington Street. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, grant a three-year obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption certificate for 136 West Washington Street and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. All righty, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing right now. Public hearing is now open for the absolute property rehabilitation exemption certificate. Members of the public wishing to address the commission for this specific item, please go ahead and approach the podium. State your name and physical address. Three minutes to speak. Not seeing anyone move in, so I'm going once. Not seeing anyone move in, so I'm going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I motion to grant a three-year obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption certificate for 136 West Washington Street, and to direct the mayor and clerk to sign such resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only, your honor, I think it's a great use of the property and look forward to the opportunity to visit.
Mr. Hanley?
I feel the same. I think that the plans that we saw and the look of what they're looking for doing and what they're planning to do to take a obsolete property is fantastic, and I think it'll make the 100 block of Washington, West Washington even better than it already is.
Any other comments from the commission? I would just like to say, Ms. White, I'm looking forward to having some of your distilled spirits once it's open. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. City clerk, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Up next, we have our consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote because of item 5D. City clerk, oh, we don't need a background, it's consent. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to just mention that within the consent agenda, we are looking to approve a resolution of support for a very significant and very competitive federal grant called Build Back Better that's being put together by Cupid and our Smart Zone, and just really grateful that they are that forward-thinking in approaching this grant application, and wish them the best of luck in their application.
Any other discussion? All right, this will require a roll call vote. City clerk, could you please conduct that for us?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, on to new business. We have item six, city attorney services. City clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city attorney services have been contracted on retainer through Kendricks, Bordeaux, Keith, Savoy, and Larson PC for roughly 16 years. Through the recent budget process, the concept of bringing the current city attorney on staff was brought up as a means to help cut costs and meet the growing need of the city for legal services. At this time, staff recommends hiring attorney Suzanne Larson as a city employee in the same manner as the city manager through an employment contract. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation: Authorize the city attorney to develop an employment contract for herself and bring it back to the city commission for final approval. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. And commissioners, I would like to make a note. I have had a discussion with a couple of commissioners, and I am wondering if we may want to form a subcommittee to review this in a little bit more detail and have that subcommittee make a recommendation, hopefully for our next meeting, something that I've been thinking about. You know, the city commission really has two employees that we hire, and I just want to make sure that we are being transparent and thorough. We certainly appreciate Suzanne Larson. I think, would like to keep her on in some capacity, but I think we just need to take a really hard look at this. So, that's something that I'm thinking about, and, you know, I didn't want to violate Open Meetings Act, so it's not something I emailed or did anything ahead of time. I wanted to mention it here at this meeting in an open meeting, but that's what I'm wondering if we can go ahead and do. If someone would be willing to make a motion, I'd certainly appreciate that. Pro Tem Hill?
Your honor, I move that we motion to allow the formation of a subcommittee of three members appointed by the mayor to discuss city attorney services and make a recommendation to the commission on how to proceed.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that, your honor.
And do we have any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yeah, I think, I'm glad we're taking this step in order to have a chance to fully vet the process and, but also at the same time not delay it and be able to move forward so that we can hopefully bring the city attorney in by the beginning of the new year and help us save money and get, actually, I think, even better service.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mayor?
I would just add, Madam Mayor, that I agree with this approach, and I think if we're going to employ our attorney in this manner, it should be the same process that we use for our city manager, which I believe worked out rather well.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only hope, your honor, that the committee will look very closely at the cost-benefit ratio between the two methodologies. I remember back when the original city attorney was removed and the decision was made at that time to go with the outside agency because one reason was a huge cost savings between legacy employees and outside contractors. So, I hope those considerations will be built into the methodology again. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the commission? All right, I, at this point, because I wanted to talk about it here, I have not decided who would like to serve. Go ahead.
You need to take a vote before you can name a subcommittee.
I wasn't going to.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to say, if commissioners are interested, to have them let me know, because it's not something that I've really put a lot of thought into, who would serve on that committee at this point, because I wanted to talk about it in the open meeting. So, thank you, Suzanne. Always trying to protect us. I really appreciate that. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. The motion on the table is to form a subcommittee. All in favor of that motion, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. All right, we are moving on to item number seven here, Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force Resolution. This will require a roll call vote. City clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of Marquette County, the Lake Superior Community Partnership has invited local governments to participate in intergovernmental discussions on housing solutions. One result of those discussions is the proposed creation of a Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force that would formalize participation in a collaborative group in order to advance local housing efforts regionally and statewide. As the state of Michigan looks at expanding the resources and programming available to address housing needs, an organized collaborative local government approach will position the county and its local governments to take advantage of new opportunities and resources. Further, many housing solutions require alignment and coordination between local units of government, and an intergovernmental task force will enable regular sharing of best practices, new initiatives, and opportunities for collaboration between communities. As such, participating jurisdictions have proposed the attached resolution for consideration by local elected bodies in order to formally appoint staff representatives that will bring forward recommendations for consideration at the local level. The city manager is recommending the appointment of Assistant City Manager Sean Hobbins as the staff representative to this task force. Participation in this task force is in alignment with recommendations in the Ad-Hoc Housing Committee final report and the 2021 to 23 City of Marquette strategic plan. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation: Approve the resolution supporting the Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force and appoint Assistant City Manager Sean Hobbins as the representative for the city of Marquette. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the resolution supporting the Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force and appoint Assistant City Manager Sean Hobbins as the representative for the city of Marquette.
Do we have a second? Pro Tem Hill?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion?
No, I think this is a common sense move that we're making here in collaboration with the LSCP and other local governments, and it's right in line with the housing committee recommendations, and, you know, we're hopefully going to find some regional, as well as some local, solutions to the affordability crisis that we're faced with right now.
Pro Tem Hill, any further discussion?
I agree. I think there, it's, we have a, we've been working on the local task force within the city, but it's, this is truly a regional and county-wide issue, and I'm really glad that we are coming together to work together on, and it's going to take time, and all of us coming up with good ideas. I really appreciate this.
Anyone else? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only, that, your honor, I certainly see a great use of this. It's really a tremendous step forward, I think, for the city to be able to get this type of a, or join this type of an effort, because the answer and the solution is not within the city of Marquette, it's rather within the region in the entire methodology of it. So, this is, this is really cool. This is a good thing.
Great. Any additional discussion? Again, this will require a roll call vote. City clerk?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. All right, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Members wishing to, or members of the public wishing to address the commission of three minutes to do so, name and physical address, please. You can go ahead and approach the podium.
If I may, I'll be really brief. Again, my name is Ryan Stock. I live at 1085 Woodridge Avenue, and I really appreciate everyone who came out today to support local climate action, and I just humbly request that you perhaps form a work session, or however it works, for the city commission to draft a climate emergency resolution, come up with a climate action plan, whether that necessitates the formation of a subcommittee on climate action, whatever that takes, and, as well as humbly request that you put said climate emergency resolution on a future agenda for one of the next meetings of the city commission, and we'll be here to support you. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Paul Schlegel, 2030 Wright Street. Number one, thanks for showing up tonight and saying all you've got to say about this very important topic, and even more importantly, thanks for sticking around. It's very important that you just, don't just come for what you're passionate about tonight, but understand all of the other workings that the city is undertaking at this time. So, I applaud you for both of those. I think it's a great idea what you're asking the commission to do, and I would hope that that's something that's going to be taken care of here in the near future. As a candidate for the Board of Light and Power position in November, I would encourage everybody to take a big look at, you know, whether it's renewable resources from the hydro plants, from solar, from, you know, from wind, and say what makes the most sense here, Marquette. You know, we've got a very seasonally impacted area of, you know, what we can, what we can really use to capitalize on what we're trying to do with renewable resources. So, if it's residential, if it's on a larger scale, I think that there's a lot of area for discussion, but I would encourage people to really look at the smaller scales and say, where can, where can we do something that's going to impact my house? From a professional side of things, and what I do as an energy optimization specialist, I would encourage you to stop and look in front of you everywhere that you go and say, what can I do right now that's going to make a big improvement or an instant impact, whether it's something, quite honestly, as way off my radar as cigarette butts, but, you know, whether it's doing something as far as insulation for your home, LED light bulbs, all of these little optimizing tactics that can be done in order to really just lower your carbon footprint. There's a zillion different ways that you can approach this, and as a, as a person that has helped with people that are needed funding to make these things happen, this past year, our company that I worked for gave back over $60,000 to residents in this, in the city of, or that were just SEMCO customers, excuse me, because they have a program. $60,000, that's a ton of money, and, you know, that doesn't even include the money that they're going to be saving from the optimization areas that they addressed. So, it's just really, there's always something out there, and I know you want to think big and you want to go big, but you can't forget the low-hanging fruit, the little things that are out there in front of you every day that you can make such a huge impact on if we all do it. From 20 bucks on your power bill a month to 200 bucks, whatever it is, do it and make a difference, and that's what's going to, you know, lead us all in the right direction for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I have the opportunity to share with you three personal connections made during this meeting. After I got up to speak, I got a handwritten note on a piece of notepaper from Jane Fidkin.
Jane?
Hi.
We're going to get together, and we're going to start doing some more recycling and some more garbage pickup, and that happened because of this meeting, so I echo what everybody says about showing up for the meeting and staying. Second of all, I was delighted to hear that you approved the new distillery business in the old Nordic Theater, because the young lady sitting back there in the pink is Anne White. She is the daughter of Mike White, and as we were introducing ourselves to each other, she remembers coming to my parents' house when she was a little person, and so was I, and she remembers some very funny stories about my mother, which are absolutely true. And we finished on the note saying she was bringing a distillery to Marquette, and I am bringing cigarette butt recycling, and we are both our fathers' daughters, if that makes any sense to you. But the important thing is her dad ran color vision for many years in Marquette, and so coming back here to run a business is an important thing. Now, Paul Schlegel, where are you? Okay. I'm here to officially endorse Paul Schlegel for a seat on the Board of Light and Power. It has nothing to do with anybody else who could be running for the Board of Light and Power. It has to do with the fact after my family grew up in a house that was completely uninsulated for 45 years of freezing, that man right there convinced my mother to insulate her house. In order to do that, he had to go through three separate interrogations, Paul? He's shaking his head. It was, he's not even counting the phone calls. He had to talk to one of my older brothers, and then he had to talk to me on a phone call from Europe, because it was a lot of hard sell. And I'm here to tell you that everything he said about insulation as a practical matter of energy savings, I can now walk around the house in the middle of the winter and not have a heavy coat on. So, what he is interested in in Board of Light and Power is light and power, and he has very practical knowledge of our climate and what it takes. So, I heartily endorse his candidacy for the Board of Light and Power. You'd be lucky to have him. And, third of all, I wanted to say that Sally Davis has got a painting party this Friday at 2:00 at the Hurley Playgrounds, and if you, nice people here would like to get involved in the community for climate change, they're putting on an eco-friendly playground for the kids, 2:00 on Friday, and I understand there might be goodies for the workers, but without that lady, I'll bring a bag of doughnuts, okay? Relax. Without that lady, the Hurley Field Playground would not exist anymore. So, thank you very much for your patience.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Public comment is now closed. All right, we are now at the point of the meeting where we have commissioner comments. We'll start things off with Commissioner Stonehouse, and then alphabetically go down the line here. Go ahead, Mr. Stonehouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick things here for everybody. Certainly, I think we, as a commission, probably ought to relook the mandate for the recycle bins, at least from the public response I've been getting, and I think you may have too. That's an issue, I think, that we need to put some greater thought on. I throw that out. Certainly, kudos to the city for becoming a redevelopment community. That's a huge step forward, and that really is something we've been working at, as they indicated, for a very long time. So, that's, that's a good thing. And by the way, I knew Mike White. I remember Mike very well. So, you have a, you have an acquaintance. For the folks that spoke about the climate change issues that we're facing, please understand the difference between the Board of Light and Power and what they control and how they control it and what the city of Marquette controls, because essentially, the BLP as of Marquette controls. Because essentially, the BLP as a as an authority is the one that really makes those decisions, not this commission. We are extraordinarily limited in the control we can have with BLP, which really only comes down to being able to approve the rates that they may recommend. So if you're going to concentrate on climate change that's driven by electricity and opportunities, those are the folks you really need to talk with. I would suggest, too, perhaps talking with the County Commission because they also have a huge role to play. And you're only dealing here with one small municipality, about a third of the population of Marquette County. You got to get those other two thirds on board, and that's going to be through the County Commission, I believe. I do believe that everyone on this commission looks forward to doing a climate change plan, and we discussed it prior. Obviously, it's in the master plan. It's in our documents for priorities to to take care of. So I don't think you have any, again, my opinion, I don't think there's any resistance up here for that at all. There is, in fact, a huge amount of support as we put that together. Other than that, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I again want to I also want to thank everybody for taking a lot of time out of your evening to show up and not only make your voices heard, make your presence felt. I can promise you, as somebody that sits up here, we may be a community of 20,000 people, but if 20 of those people show up to a meeting, it feels like the whole town is telling you to do something. So, you know, this is effective. It's an effective means of trying to get get action. When I was in high school, I grew up here in Marquette. When I was in high school, I got the high school environmental club and the student council together, and we went and talked to the superintendent, and we talked to the school board. And part of what came out of that, we didn't get everything we wanted, like we wanted like rooftop solar for the school and things like that. But the entire second year of like a five-year millage sinking fund for the school district was devoted to energy efficiency improvements throughout the district, which really made a big difference, both in terms of offsetting costs. The district could spend more money on education rather than energy costs, but also for for the environment and the climate. So I think it's awesome to see so many people showing up, and I know that we are working on the climate emergency resolution. And, you know, I I would encourage folks, if you want to talk, get coffee, talk on the phone, send me an email, call me, text me. My contact info is on the city website. I'd be happy to talk with you about it. And again, I mean, I would encourage folks to think about how we can make a difference at the local level. You know, climate change is a local issue. It may be a global problem, but all problems happen somewhere to someone, and it's happening to us right now, for sure. Climate change is an emergency, and we should treat it like one. So and we're already, I think, making some progress, right? I mean, we've transitioned from a coal power plant that's owned operated by the BLP. As Commissioner Stonehouse pointed out, the municipal electric utility is managed by a separate elected authority, and there is an election for the BLP this fall as well. But we've transitioned from a coal plant to a mix of natural gas and some solar. We recently amended our zoning code in the city to make it easier for people to install rooftop or backyard solar and to actually, I think we doubled the permissible capacity that people could install on their property. So I mean, there's steps that we're taking, and I say that not to say like, oh, we've already done something so we can kind of just slack off. I say that as encouragement that like you can make a real difference at a local level. Maybe not as broad as, say, if you were at the UN, but perhaps a much deeper impact. So thank you. And yeah, lastly, I just want to say that I was encouraged, number one, I was encouraged by some action on housing tonight. I think we need to make sure that we're keeping that front and center moving forward into the coming year, and that we have maybe some some deliverables this time next year, some progress, that some tangible progress that the community can see. And then, secondly, I would agree with Commissioner Stonehouse with regards to the recycling. I do think we need to look at, you know, personally, I think that, you know, one of the things we worked on was also trying to get the city to increase its recycling rate when I was in in school, and that's how I got involved in city government. And I think that this transition to the universal free carts for city residents will result in our recycling rate increasing dramatically. And it also will allow us to actually make sure the glassware recycling is non-contaminated and usable. However, I do think that we need to find ways to make it a little, you know, provide some sort of alternative for people. So while I do agree with providing everybody with a cart, perhaps some alternative, like I've talked with a couple of residents, heard from a couple of residents who would be, you know, would be okay with an alternative where they could take their recyclables to the same location as their glass and and leave it there if they really just don't want to deal with the carts. So I do think that there's a little bit more massaging and discussion to do there, but I think we're overall heading in the right direction. But we are listening to that public feedback, for sure.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I've had several people ask me about trick or treat hours, and I'm sure that our city manager will maybe announce that tonight. But I also want to point out that the DDA and and is going to be putting up signs in businesses and allowing trick or treaters to stop in at those places. So thank you, Becky, and thank you to the DDA. And Professor Stock, thank you for enlightening all of these people and in motivating all of these young people to come to a city commission meeting, which I'm sure they're finding very enlightening. You know, it's it's I, you know, Commissioner Bonzal talked a lot about what we have already done as a city, and I think that you'll find that every one of us commissioners and the city staff is very interested in this topic, and there's always more that we can do to help our earth. Also, Ms. Brum and Mr. Schlegel also talked about what we as individuals need to do, and so I hope you're all asking yourselves that same question, because there are things that we can do as individuals. And but I do think that we will be seeing a resolution in the near future from this commission. You know, and as I already talked about, we had our last meeting, we voted to approve that application for a curbside recycling grant, and it has a potential to require carts for households that choose to recycle at the curbside. And Leslie Williams was here to talk about that against the requirement of carts, and she's not alone. We've all had emails. We've all talked to other residents in the community about this issue, and we need to continue that discussion and the discussion of recycling within the city. Last Wednesday, Wednesday is my garbage night, I walked around our neighborhood, and I was pretty appalled that about only 50% of the people put out their glass, the other 50% put out their regular recycling. So we definitely need to do better, and I think Marquette can and wants to do better with our recycling. So, you know, please, residents, continue to let us let us know your thoughts on how best to recycle. We're listening, and we want to improve. Unfortunately, no solution will please everyone, but somewhere there is a best solution for our environment.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today has definitely been more of an eye-opening meeting than I expected it to be when I looked at the agenda that was presented to us. I want to thank all of you that came out to this meeting to talk to us about the climate change. I want you to know that I agree with you on the seriousness of the nature, and I think that we should be taking steps forward immediately to be working towards this. We're lucky enough to live in a beautiful area, and I want to keep it that way for my son and for generations to come. And I think, as you can hear, most everyone on the committee on that commission feels that same way. I look forward to looking working with you all in the future, and I will echo what Evan said. All my information along with all of our information is on our city website. You can reach out to us if I would love to meet and talk to you and hear your concerns or your ideas or things that you want to go moving forward. And I really do encourage you to reach out to each and any one of us that you feel like. We would we are all here for that exact reason, and we love hearing from the citizens in the area about the things that matter. Other than that, I think I'm good.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
All right. Thank you. Good meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you to the morning drum and the land acknowledgement. I am deeply, deeply honored to be a part of that today. I want to talk, though, too, about so many of the things we did today are about the future and what the future of Marquette is going to look like, and that we're coming together after enduring 18 months of really hard times and the sickness and the tremendous uncertainty that we have all lived through in the last few months, years now, has really been it's been really, really hard. And sitting here in these seats and getting to see how folks have responded to these hard times has really also been an honor. And really, I'm looking forward to the next six to 12 months in which we are going to be able to talk together as a community about what kind of future do we want? What kind of, you know, work has changed, how we go to school has changed, and there are still a lot of people with a lot of needs in our community right now. And so I am really that we have 20 people come to our meeting to talk about our future, it gives me hope about where we or how we can have this conversation going forward with with a vision towards a good and healthy community, where everyone is honored and everyone is has an opportunity to achieve the kind of life that they want to live. In particular, we have the tools, things like redevelopment ready, which makes which we approved today, makes that more possible. Having a climate adaptation plan will make that more possible. The work that the DDA is doing is going to make that more possible. And so I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work to get us here, and there's a lot coming in the future, and I hope you keep coming to our meetings and absolutely, of course, contact me. Thank you.
Well, first, I wanted to say thank you to each. Oh, Commissioner Mayor, I got hung up. I got out of order there, didn't I? Sorry about that. Man.
You're dead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mayor. I'm sorry.
You're dead. I've got a lot to say today, honestly. Those in the public, I sprout 50/50 if I really have comment, because sometimes I just I can talk a lot during the meetings, and sometimes I I save it for the end. But, you know, today, at the start of this meeting, well, just prior to the start of the meeting, Mayor Smith read a land acknowledgement for acknowledging that Marquette is, you know, the ancestral homeland, the Anishinaabe, and we had the the Thunder Group here that performed that honor song for us. And it's just, you know, two years ago, when I was the student body president still at ASNMU, I read a presidential proclamation that the students of NMU recognized that. And the there are members of this community, some of the things that they said about me and about that concept, I don't think I would ever repeat out loud. And if you would have told me that two years from that scenario, that I would have been here today to watch that and to hear the mayor of Marquette read that land proclamation, I just I don't think I would have believed you. So that, you know, sorry, I don't really get emotional about a lot of stuff, but it really got me at the start of this meeting today. To all of you still here in the public, I'd love to hear from all of you. I also love the fact that you all stayed here, and the amount of energy that you all kind of brought throughout this meeting was awesome. Youth leadership and mentorship is very important to me, and if any of you want to get involved in the public sphere at all, if you go to the City of Marquette's Facebook, not Facebook page, their website, and go to the commission tab, my contact information is on there. Feel free to shoot me an email. If it's, you know, you just don't know where to start, whatever it may be, feel free to reach out to me. I'd love to help you. Again, thank you all for being there. I mean, here for this meeting. But the last thing I would say is I have also gotten a lot of correspondence regarding our recycling bins, and perhaps there is some sort of exemption we could explore or certain scenarios in which that could be an appropriate thing we could try doing. But I'm not sure what that would look like. If I remember correctly, the grant was also based off the percentage of city residents that utilize them. So I understand there may be some challenges with that, but maybe there is some options we can explore for residents where maybe their lot size is just a problem in general for having these. But and now I think I'm good.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that, Commissioner Mayor. Well, I wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming. I sincerely appreciate hearing from members of the public, and especially when you're passionate about a topic and as, you know, professional and on, you know, on target, and you came with a unified message, and it I think it really does impact us. We hear you. We see you. It's it's hard to ignore you when you're sitting right here in the chair in front of us for, you know, an hour and a half meeting. So thank you. It's often we get folks who come to come a public comment, and then they leave immediately after. So they don't stay to the end where we have a chance to say something back. So I really appreciate you staying this long, not playing on your phones, being attentive. I mean, those are some skills that are difficult this day and age, and I commend all of you. If you any of you like a job, I've got about six for you after this meeting. So, no, I appreciate you, all of you, and I certainly take your message to heart. I talked with Professor Stock on Saturday morning, and I fully intend to look at the draft that he has presented and that your group has presented to us, maybe make some modifications and bring it to the commission hopefully yet in 2021 by the end of the calendar year. We'll see. You know, that could get pushed back a little, but it's my intention that we do look at that, and I would like to vote on adopting a climate emergency resolution or something to that effect. So, yeah, thank you. And you are heard. We hear you, and we want to take action, too, and we have been taking action for decades. And sometimes we just need to take a fresh look at that action and see what else we need to do to kind of spur us forward into the future. But as, you know, some of you mentioned, if you look at some of the plans we have in place, we are working on this constantly. I think you've heard about the recycling carts. This is my next topic I'd like to talk about. We're making a push. We have a grant opportunity, and we're trying to get more folks to use the recycling bins at no cost to them, which would hopefully encourage more folks to recycle. But I understand that's difficult for some, too, and I think we do need to listen to our residents and hear what their needs are and see what can be done. So it's always kind of a right, these are the the critical issues we deal with, you know, snow removal, trash pickup, lights, water, power, all those things that people those are the essential city services. And if we don't get those right, no one else in the city cares what else we're doing. You know, we got to make sure my trash is picked up, my lights are on, the streets are plowed. Okay, fine, you want to do something else, go for it. But we got to take care of those baseline services. So we're working on that as we're also looking to the future. Finally, I just just wanted to mention, I'm not sure if all of you are registered to vote in the City of Marquette, but the ones who are, there is an election on November 2, and there are two seats up on the ballot, both local elections. So City Commission, there are two seats that are vacant. Well, not vacant, but they're going to be up for reelection or a vacancy. And the Board of Light and Power also has two seats on that on that. So either go ahead to the polls on November 2, or you can vote via absentee. If you've received your absentee ballot, I would just encourage you to dig it out from under the pile, fill it out, drop it off here at City Hall, or mail it in. And I appreciate folks who do take the time to vote, especially in those years where it's not a governor governor race, not a presidential race, it's not as many things on the ticket. But often, the local elections make a lot more impact on your daily lives than the bigger races do. So just something I wanted to put on everyone's radar. That's everything I had for tonight. City Manager Karen Kovacs, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes. So Halloween and trick or treating is designated as October 31, and the times that we are designating at this point are 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We will be issuing a PSA and information on the city's webpage. So look for that soon. We've had several comments and several questions. So I know it's traveling around there. So spread the word, 4:00 to 7:00 on October 31. Community office hours for the city manager will be at the Peter White Public Library, and it will be tomorrow from 10:00 to 12:00. So please come in and come and see me, and I will be there till noon. And then, lastly, I had a quick question that's a request to kind of inform the public about the archway onto Presque Isle. There it was damaged about a month ago, and it we are working on that. We are working on estimates to get that repaired, but you may see that come down, and we will be sure to have a PSA out that but out there. But we are aware that it was damaged. We are working on that and should be repaired as soon as possible, but we'll most likely not see that until the spring. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:47 p.m. Thanks, everyone.